Alright, good evening. This is the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees. It's held via hybrid format, allowing for most attendance. First, I will take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and prepared. For trustees, Kay Hayhill.
Here.
J.K. Alka.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Megan Small.
Yeah.
Joshua Small.
Here.
Eric Hart Gray.
Here.
For library staff, library director, Robert McLean.
Here.
Administrative specialist, Janet White.
Yeah.
Program specialist, Dana Dennis.
Here.
And reporting secretary, Bay Trist.
Here.
This meeting is being recorded. If there is a problem that prevents the participation of this meeting, we will brief convene at seven P M. on November eighteenth, twenty twenty five. I hereby call this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees to order at seven oh four P M. For public comments, citizens are welcome to speak for up to three minutes each, not to exceed a total of ten minutes. Citizens are encouraged to inform the library director in advance of their intention to speak. Those who provide advance notice will be called upon first. While the board will take a couple of comments under advisement, there may be no opportunity for discussion or debate during this portion of the meeting. First item on our agenda for today is to request a motion to adjourn the minutes of the September meeting. And then we can discuss, so. Second. Right, open it up for discussion.
One tiny thing on page two, second line, after the safe child policy, second line, missing period.
Does that intentionally just to see if we're reading carefully?
Yes.
Right, with any further comments to the minutes? In that case, we can move ahead to a voice vote, since we are all here in person today. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? The motion passes now. Move on to the next item, which will be directed for Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Um, just to go over some of the highlights by department, this one here, the children's department has three new dogs for their read to dog program, which is quite popular, so. That is useful, and we had a passing this summer, so we were in need of additional dogs, so. Sorry to be a bummer, life happens. So you may have heard of Zumba for adults, with the Zumbini for children, and we've got it going on here at the library, so. It's for kids ages one to five, and as it says here, it uses movement and music activities and exercises for cognitive development, so. Parents have been really happy and provided some positive feedback so far about Zumbina for Zubini for kids. Moving on to technical services department, I just want to. Call your attention to the Needham Memory Cafe launch, which happened at the end of September here in this room. In the springtime, Tamara Dalton, who's the technical services supervisor and has nothing to do with programming, except that she loves it, and she runs Cup and Chaucer, the monthly poetry meeting. Had a thought to, for us to get involved in a memory cafe, to bring people who have dementia and their caregivers here once a month to have a space to be together. Share concerns, thoughts, and just have a nonjudgmental, safe place to come. So she reached out to the Needham Community Council, and they had just received a grant to hire somebody to run such a program, so it was perfect timing, and so now. The N C C, along with the Health Department and Youth and Family Services and the library, are all working together to put on a monthly memory cafe here at the library. So in this room, so it'll be the fourth Tuesday of the month, and September was the fourth Thursday due to the holiday. So it was a big success, everybody working together, and we had fifteen people, and their caregivers show up and participate in the launch. So we're really excited about that, when our staff can. Marry their interests and passions outside of the library with the mission that we do, which is perhaps not in their job description, but. You know, we're happy to give them the time to make it happen, and Karen Donahue from the Circulation Department is also part of the separate, and so we've been working together to. Make it a big success, and so far it is.
Who's facilitating the work?
The person that the N C C hired with the grant, name is Stephanie, and so she's the lead, but then they have. An activity person who comes and facilitates movement or music during the hour long, and there's food and time for conversation. There's also another memory cafe going on every month, run by Wing Gate and the Cat, so you may see flyers advertisement for that, so. Tamara and the N C C, they're very thoughtful in noting when other memory cafes in the Metro West area were happening, so they didn't overlap. So it's a nice addition, so that people have choices here in Needham to come to for this. Moving on to another thing that Tamara is involved in, and that's the Poet Laureate Program. She runs Cup and Chaucer and filled in last fall. On the program, we were without a reference supervisor, because her love of poetry, so. Under her section, research information about the community crowdsourced poem that we launched at the Harvest Fair last weekend. And Night on the Poet Laureate is going to write a poem based on people's responses to the question, what makes Needham home? So for the month of October, we're collecting those responses here in the library and through our website. And, and in early November, we'll take them all, sort them, think through them, and write a poem, which will be. Launched to the world the Monday before Thanksgiving, so just in time for the holidays, this poem about what makes Needham home will be. Produced and shared with everybody, so.
At the Harvest Fair, thank you.
Oh, yes, I missed you, I was out walking around.
Oh.
Chatting with.
Yeah, it was so nice of them to be there.
Yeah, yeah, and came for, yeah.
They had the best table in the whole place, under the tree and the shade. It was great.
It was a hot day.
It was strategic, right?
Yes.
Moving on to technology and archives departments, one tech item is we have new self-checkout misscan stations that have been placed in children's circulation and everyone at the open holds area, so people can more conveniently. Self-checkout rather than walk around the corner to the circulation desk. And then the fourth bullet here, on Friday, Data Bank IMX, the company that's digitizing our historic newspapers, is coming to pick up all the volumes and the reels of microfilm. And we'll do that project, which is really exciting, this is funded by a very generous donation received last fall. So we're excited for that to happen and to get all of that decades and decades of Needham history up online for people to search.
And probably second to the digital comic book.
Those are going to go into newspapers. I get them mixed up, either Internet Archive or digital comic.
Okay.
They have different purposes, I believe newspapers will be in the Internet Archive.
Thank you.
That's where the yearbooks are, the Internet Archive, where photographs are into digital. Yeah, so up through nineteen twenty-nine will be shared through the Internet Archive, after nineteen twenty-nine, they'll be available in-house for use. Because it's on the public domain, so people have the same ease of use by using, searching through terms, press additions, it'll just be in-house use.
But we have to do it on computer here, and we have to access it from remote.
Right. Also, just to let you know, today Danielle sent out a request for proposals from consultants to work on our archives project, which is part of the action plan for this year, so. She finished a scope after consulting with the N B L C and got a list of people who do this work, and so she already this afternoon received two positive responses, of people interested in submitting a proposal for our work. So that is going to be a big step towards. Knowing how to move forward with our archives. All the work that needs to be done, so that's pretty exciting. Those proposals are due by the end of October, so sometime in November, for the next meeting, we'll. But archival consultant on board. Under circulation, just wanted, the second bullet, this is a tedious but very important project that Karen and Kelsey are taking the lead on. In Sierra, which is our database, there are five thousand notes on Needham patron records. So we are reviewing those notes and deleting those notes that have expired or are not. Important for us to have any, what would a note be? A note could be Jay paid for a lost book in February of two thousand twenty-two.
So also things that say like, my wife can take out my books for me kind of thing.
So those would not be deleted, but yeah, also it's a note, so we're not deleting all five thousand, and if we were, we'd just delete it, but they're being reviewed, and those that are not necessary. We're getting rid of, so they've finished reviewing about fifteen hundred of them, so that's a great project, and just part of the maintenance that will keep up.
Thanks to them for doing that.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're both, you know, a little bit of time an hour here and an hour there, making it a consistent project that they, they work on. Well, there are sixteen thousand six hundred or so Needham residents who have a Needham library card, so. And last bullet on the circulation, we've already heard some really positive comments from patrons who use the Large Print Collection, who are happy with its new permanent. Location at the front of the adult fiction collection, and that work happened. On September nineteenth, our staff development day, we had fifteen staff members working to move the entire Large Print Collection. It was forty-three hundred volumes in the course of one hour, from the back, where the empty shelves aren't now, to the front.
That's a good team building exercise.
It was.
Karen and I run studies about shifting the adult fiction collection.
Yeah, and we had some staff shifting the Lucky Day collection, the new books, the paperback, so there's more room for the new book collection.
If you haven't walked down that old row where the fiction was, it's been reorganized and very impressive project.
Yes.
So the physical A V collection is now on the wall, and the Large Print Collection is front and center, and Adult Fiction is the last project that will occur in the next month or so, where. The empty shelves will be adults fiction, we're just going to expand it and not use the top shelf and the bottom shelf, and have shelves for browsing. Similar to the adult nonfiction collection on the second shelf, so we'll be using all of that real estate, it'll just be more browsable. And then we'll be done. For now. Not conglous, until we think of something else. So that's just a huge effort that Tamara and the circulation department and Tamara's team have put in thousands of hours of work over the past six months on this project. And we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and we're really excited that patrons are already responding positively, especially to the large print movement.
So anyone complaining about the moving of the CDs or the DVDs, those other locations, no?
Do you want to be the first?
No, no, I'm, no, I'm not complaining, I was just curious, you know?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't, but no, we've been. Helping people, so one thing that's nice, with the DVD collection in particular, we have browsing shelves now, so where we can pull out movies and highlight them. From the collection, and I just walked by tonight, and there's a number of empty ones, so that's helping to, for people to discover, perhaps some old gems they forgot, forgot about. So moving on to personnel, there's a lot going on, Elliot Sumante is gone, he was a part-time children's reference librarian, who ran one of the most popular storytimes, Wednesday mornings here. He was a great asset, been here for two and a half years, and moved on to a full-time job in a public library, so we wish him well and the best of luck.
Nice person.
Yeah, very great guy, so his last day was Friday, October third, so we had a nice party with him, thanks to Paula.
Nice to see photos of these people, because I know most of these people by, by face, but not so much by name, you know?
Luanne Karen Leslie, who's our full-time technical services assistant, who started her time with us in the circulation department, she moved to tech services about a year and a half ago or so. She retired, so her last day is Friday.
Congratulations to her.
So we're really happy for her, and then having a party for her Friday to say goodbye. So that position has been posted, as well as Elliot's position has been posted. And the circulation surprise position is vacant, and that position has also been posted, so we have three jobs posted currently, they'll all close around the same time, and so. The end of October, beginning of November, we'll be reading lots of resumes, applications, and setting up interviews. So, so far, everybody is filling in and helping out across departments, children's and circulation, tech services, and Diana and Adam, too. Well, Luanne is still here till Friday, so, you know, but Tamara will be putting in some time when she's gone, so we thank everybody for chipping into, during this time when. We have some vacancies again, so I think we'd gone about six months without any vacancies, so. The record has ended, for now. So, as I mentioned, we have staff development day on Friday, September nineteenth, it was a packed day, we talked about phase, the phase one project and self-care, we talked about the F Y twenty-six action plan, the project leaders talked about. The items that they're taking, they're managing, we had some visitors, starting with the new town manager, and Latanya Steele from the Cow, and. Marine and Sandy back from N C C, we had a craft with Chelsea, who used to work here, we made books. Japanese funded books.
Yes.
Chelsea Brown?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
So that was, that was fun, and then we moved the Large Print Collection, as mentioned, and then each department had department meetings. To catch up and go over things that's important.
I, I know in, in past years, and I'm not sure if it was during the staff days, but trustees would sometimes join for either a breakfast or a lunch, and it was one of our rare chances to spend time with staff. You know, was it on that day?
It was definitely.
But it was nice to have, at least, you know, once in a while, if there's another opportunity that comes up, once a year.
Okay, that's good to know, one thing we did do that morning was. We launched the breakfast with the construction workers, so we invited them down, and they joined us for breakfast, we're going to be planning that out, and can certainly invite trustees to join us.
I can understand why you chose the construction workers over the, over the trustees. Not many opportunities to have breakfast with the construction.
Yeah.
Or, or other opportunities for us, since there has been a lot of new staff, wonderful brought in, for us to kind of meet them, I don't know, sometimes, you know, they could come here and talk about some projects they're working on, or, you know. Just for us to kind of know their faces and names, there would be some opportunities.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah. And then, following the week after, Ginny, one of the public health nurses, came and gave us all three shots, those who wanted them, so that was nice and very convenient, that was for staff. And then, since the last meeting, which I missed, and I apologize for that, just list of different meetings here. I've met a few times Liz LaRossi, the new deputy town manager. She, I, I knew from the Old Collie Library Network, she was library director in Randolph before she moved on to run community services for the town of Randolph. She knows libraries, she used to work here as a reference librarian. Back in two thousand eighteen, so she knows and loves libraries, which is great.
So is she now the manager, managing the library?
Liaison.
Yeah, same as Katie, so she's in charge of park and rec and health in the library, planning departments, yeah, there was no change to, to that. She, along with Katie, will be coming to the December ninth trustee meeting. That's the earliest they could come, because, as you may remember, your meetings are at the same time as the select board meetings, but they'll be, both be here on Tuesday, December ninth. To, you'll be able to meet Liz, and then Katie can talk about her priorities.
I wonder if that's, sorry, I wonder if that's the issue. Whether we wrote our bylaws if we open up the select board or not, but now that we do want to regulate this, is that something we should revisit, that's too much.
Such as on a Wednesday instead of a Tuesday?
Or a different Tuesday, because they need like twice monthly, you know, like.
I think it means second, fourth Tuesday.
The third Tuesday. Anyway, that's why, I just putting that out there, as future consideration, that might be a to-do item, to-do item for the coming year, is looking at the bylaws generally, and seeing if there's anything outdated or anything that needs to be.
If you give me enough notice, I can get it into the calendar so that it's decided for you guys, if that's what you want to switch to.
Whatever.
Once it exists.
I think we'll have to go through a process, updating bylaws. Easier said than done, but it's a good call. And alternatively, we can just shift one meeting per year to have the town manager or deputy town manager.
Yes.
On the T room expansion and renovation project, things are going well, as of today, we're slightly ahead of schedule and on budget still. Staff and patrons. Managing well and being flexible, there's not. Extreme disruptions to the life of the library, so, so that's good. One thing that starts next month is the construction storytime series.
Yeah, what is that?
So it's a way for us to connect what's going on upstairs with our youngest patrons, who are really interested in construction. So, starting with Alex, who's the superintendent for tower construction, he's going to do a storytime for kids with construction-themed picture books. Ken is going to follow in December, he's, yeah, he's the O P M. for the project, and then. Depending on which trades are working in January and February, we'll bring others to, to do that, and that'll be held here. He'll be wearing hard hats.
So there's a lot of hard hats for the kids.
Get some little hard hats for the kids.
Yeah.
I wish they could have put a window in that, believe me, people would be staring in all the time.
Ah, probably not, they probably wouldn't have pulled that out.
That's the way it's constructed, but yeah, we got a window, believe me, we would have people staring in all the time.
Like watching. Doesn't Needham vendors give out hard hats with their logo for the parade, I wonder if they have like a bunch of those somewhere?
Yeah, they do.
Donate them.
They did it on the Fourth of July.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Alex is, he's, he's been really good about that, because Kay and I were here, and they opened the door and let us come in, so. They just let us take a little peek. But he's, I think he's, he's got the right temperament, and they are, he's saying, says not to jinx anything, but we're moving. As a schedule, which is nice.
We can tell you, reference truly appreciates, yes, they're very noisy, however, they gave us a view.
Yes.
To give you a view, meaning we have a huge mural on that wooden wall, so we are not looking at wood.
Oh, great.
So there's a Caribbean beach.
It's lovely.
Or I think reference stuff identified as most likely a Venezuelan beach, based on the fauna that was.
The fauna presence.
You know, it is to be certain.
So.
Couldn't help themselves.
Yeah, so Alex put that up, Alex is, couldn't bend over backwards more for us, he's been very responsive and understanding that we're open and we are fully library serving. Something that is not as fun as construction storytime is the surplus furniture, which was a saga, is over. The remains of it have been put up on municipal, so that the public could bid on it, and they have come and picked up the furniture and handed over their checks or wads of cash to us. Which we have to turn to the finance department, I think we made about eight hundred bucks or so on the town of Needham.
Okay.
We probably invested thousands of staff hours in the process, but anyways, we, it is the process, and we followed the process. Yeah, Diana deserves all the thanks on that, and Jeff, Jeff Laura. And then Erin is beginning to hold programming onsite routines, because this room isn't.
Where is that, where does she do that?
She's done some at the Rosemary Recreation Place down there.
Yeah.
She was going to help one at the gazebo across the street, but it was raining last week, so that was last minute brought over to the Bosworth Room. Which has got plans to continue using. Other town spaces.
Was that the tarot reading?
That was the, yeah.
I, I wish I could have had time to sit with that, but.
Yeah, it is October.
It's going to be in the newspaper, because of the shape the report paper had, and had her reading and interview at the same time.
Which newspaper, which is hometown newspaper?
Yeah.
It's the only one we have. Yeah.
The real news.
Moving on to the financial reports, the first one I wanted to speak to, which is attached, and you attach it, is the operating budget. So. We are on track, you can see for salaries, we have a balance of just about seventy-five percent, so with one quarter out of the way, that makes sense. Our expenses may seem shocking, but about sixty-eight thousand or so, that seventy-eight thousand we've spent was our minimum membership fee, and so that's a bill that we pay right up front in July. So we are on target and comfortable where we are with expenses, and then books, period, those may look like we're a little bit behind, and that's because in the summertime, we use money from the friends and the trust funds to purchase materials, so. That's ended, and we've started to order and pay those invoices using our operating budget. Moving on to the next report, the library stadium report. List all the expenditures. That we've paid out based on what the trustees set money aside for, so this is from programming to phase one related things, to conference registration, professional development here. So for the year, we've sent just over twenty-four thousand dollars out of library stadium for the library. And have plans to use most of the rest that you have set aside for us to support the library.
Am I remembering correctly, we talked about moving the website maintenance. Not happening.
That's, thank you for that question, because under the operating budget, I should have included that. The F Y twenty-seven operating budget request is due late from Friday, no later by noon, and so part of that request will include. Funds to pay for the Sterling, the annual maintenance of the website, so that's about forty-eight hundred dollars. So that's about forty-eight hundred dollars or so. So we'll put in a request formally incorporate that into the operating budget. Along with requesting funds for another part-time team librarian to support the new team room. And then we also ask the town to pay for the annual subscription to LibStaff, which is what we use to schedule all the service desk and all the departments, all employees, including myself in the library. It's essential for our operations and that has been paid for by other sources. So we'll be asking the town to cover that. So. But yes, we'll be starting the process of those items that have been in library state aid for a number of years for our, and/or are essential to our operations to make formal requests each year to fold those into our operating budget. The last one is the trust fund report. And in the director's report, there's a list of the expenditures from the re-trust funds that are reported here. Downing down our spending for materials for the trust funds. So we're on track there. Move it on in the report. I'm going to speak to the statistical report that you haven't seen in a number of months. And let you know that it's come to our attention that the report did not always include accurate information. So we want to use this time to make sure we're providing you with the right numbers. But also open up a discussion with the trustees about what numbers do you want? There's a lot of numbers in what we have. Right, because of. So at the November meeting, we want to share a draft of a new monthly report with you. But maybe get some input tonight about what information here is important for you and what maybe is not so important. So we can ensure we have the data you need to be informed, to let majors and friends know what's going on here. And also perhaps see if we can present it to you in a more impactful way. Perhaps infographic, something that's sustainable for us, but is more useful and reader friendly, something that you'd be happy to share with people. Unlike perhaps what we've given it. So, you know. I think once we fix the process, it won't be as onerous as it has been. And once we do fix the process, we'll have trusted data that we can share. Whether you want to keep this exactly the way it is or change it up. What we also could do is, you know, provide a monthly report of some data and then a quarterly report of more and then an annual summary of, of everything. But there is the iris, which kind of does that, which I included tonight in tonight's packet.
Are you talking about like the circulation statistics that it could be shared? Not sure what report.
Yes, yep.
It's usually embedded in your directory report, right? It's not a separate, I just start look, look.
I found something.
Yeah, it's usually. So it's, it's an attachment in the packet I send out, but you haven't received it in a few months. So circulation data, I think, is critical along with program information. The number of people who have entered the library, maybe even the number of registered library.
I think the one thing like I always thought is like, the month, month is so volatile that like, I don't know that you need to, like, year to year data is useful as the first year. It's like month to month, like one month happens to have twenty programs, the next month happens to have fifty programs or whatever, making the numbers up. And it's like a two hundred fifty percent increase of like.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, right. So if it's, it's not meaningful data. And again, a lot of this might depend on how these numbers are derived at. Depending on your process, but what always struck me as really useful was the year to date. And then in comparison against prior year to date, because that allows us to keep track of your overall trends during the year. It smoothes out for, you know, monthly cycles. Like, you know, comparing May to June isn't too useful because they're two very different months, same with June to July. But seeing where we are this year versus where we were last year at the same time. To the extent that it's possible to keep track of that in whatever spreadsheet or system we're using is a good way. And to your point, Rob, about presenting, you know, a certain amount in monthly, a certain amount quarterly, and a certain amount yearly, that actually reflects what a lot of companies do. You know, typically quarterly is sort of condensed financials, year end, your complete financials, which is kind of open to financial statements. And then monthly is kind of a shorter update. So I think that, that kind of nicely reflects a lot of other organizations do that.
Yeah, I like the option.
I think so. I think once we just get it in place and staff are using the same method of tracking their data. To prior, it should not be an issue. There may be a delay in comparing things to last fiscal year. I'm not sure initially we'd want to. Just because I don't know what we're comparing.
Right, like the apples and oranges at first.
Yeah.
But I think this is a good time to address this issue and fix it. And then also get your input about, do you need all this? Maybe you answer just yes and you want.
Are there particular, are there particular things that it's, you know, not easy to prepare? Which, which you're inclined to suggest maybe we no longer include in the municipal support report?
No.
Okay.
So I do find the trends, you know, following the trends like downloadable books versus print books. Downloadable. Now, it's interesting to see what people are taking out accessing. So I find those things interesting. I'm not sure I need to see self-checkouts. Is that? But. Certainly we like to see how, you know, websites, the website hits, I think are useful. Posting, some of this is interesting posting to Facebook, how much are we posting on Instagram? I don't know that we need to see study room turnaways. I mean, everybody else could chime in here, but this is.
This is stuff that may be useful for you operationally.
Yes.
Which may not necessarily be important for us.
Yeah.
Registration refers to new, new library cards?
I think having some basic statistics like we were describing. And then if there were any specific ones that were aligned with, you know, like our action plan or decisions we were trying to make that here, that we might want to track more closely. Perhaps that's how we would then add to whatever's the basic statistics. Second question. So are you saying that discovered that there was a problem somewhere in this chain or at multiple points in this chain of preparing this report? Like data collection, data analysis, presentation, like what have you discovered that there? What have you discovered in terms of problems?
Trying to track past data that's been reported to the trustees has not always been possible or accurate. So we're not sure that what has been reported has been accurate. So.
But do, the question is, do the data we have that, that is historic or last year, do we trust that data in your system?
Oh, yes. You mean in our system?
Yes. Like is there, is the problem that there was something translation between the system and what we're getting?
Yes, yeah. The good data is there. The good trustworthy data is there.
Okay.
We just need to formalize a new process to get it onto this piece of paper.
Yeah. So it's not used that prior era reports or anything like that.
Right.
Okay.
Somebody's sort of guessing.
My fault.
Guessing going on when someone's putting this together that, you know, is informal, not, not taking the time to, you know. Okay.
Follow-up question I have for you is that are the data we appended to our annual report this summer accurate?
I'd have to look into it. My guess is that not one hundred percent.
Okay. And we should figure out whether or not that's true because we often use that data is as part of our substantive claims in letters to the select board, then comp etcetera when we ask for them. Yeah. So we want to make sure we get that.
Yeah. So part of this is why I included the iris in your packet along with the financial report because that data is accurate.
Okay.
And overlaps in a lot of ways with the data on the monthly report.
Coming from the same source.
But that data is accurate.
I would like to continue to see, I think programs, since that is such an important and growing function of a library in general. I like personally, I always look at the programs, how many are running, how many people are coming. So I like that data. So I think it really reflects sort of the life of the library. Lost and damaged stuff I.
So we can work on the November meeting, what would be a draft or revise monthly report and a, and a new quarterly report? And maybe put some of this data on one end or the other and using real data. So it'll be.
Is there a way that we can get like a list of all the various types of data, like not the actual data itself, but like the, these are the different categories of data that.
If we look at a prior statistical.
Well, I know, but there might be more, but there might be more newer things they want to put on, but that might separate it out.
Categories.
Yeah, like, yeah, like categories, just so we can think about them in advance at the meeting, too.
Yeah, I can, I could certainly share that. What's listed here, the most important data is here. There's just also some data that maybe it was important when an initiative started, like self-checkouts. And, you know, but maybe it's no longer needed or like steady run turnaways, we now using aspects and maybe that's not needed.
Right, right.
The fees like.
Would you take a more bulleted approach to like condensing it? Just so that instead of having like this real long, long, long document, just maybe two or three bullets for certain, like what Josh was talking about. Just having certain categories. And then that way it's a even flow.
Yeah, we definitely want this to be easy for you to use. So it could be a combination of, you know, bulleted information, but also some charts or like a pie chart or a bar chart where it makes sense that, where we want to highlight perhaps our most important data and show those trends.
Right. To like Earhart's point, it's just, it just makes, as long as we are moving forward and we're, we're trying to make sure that any information we have is correct, that if we're speaking out in, in a public kind of forum. That's probably the most important data we have. That has to be concise and and correct. And then I think the other aspects of that are those have a little bit more, like anything that's meat that we need to really bring to the table and bring to the public, those are the most important. And I guess it's just figuring out what those are. But like I would have a real concern if there was some data that we might be talking to somebody about. We're not really clear if it's correct or not because, yeah, people looking to not fund things these days. And we don't want to be in that, in that area. We want to make sure what we're saying, something that's actual, factual. That's correct as possible.
Yeah. So, so until next meeting, I'm wanting to at least get the iris here to you, which has our FY twenty-five data. And that is accurate and it covers circulation, holdings, programs. Staffing data. So at least you would have, I know it's a lot and there were some things I wanted to talk about on that report as well as a financial report. But it's something you could hold on to with confidence until the November meeting.
Looking at the total circulation for FY twenty-five, I'm pretty sure that's a record. Close to six hundred thousand circulation, which I remember pre immediately pre-then, like I think we're topping out around five hundred thousand. So that's nice to say. Yes. Yeah, row, row C fifty, which is toward circulation circles.
So I can move on to those, but I, I did take notes on your feedback tonight. But if you want to reach out with more thoughts about what you'd like to see, but at the November meeting, we'll have a couple of drafts, drafts of like a monthly report and what a quarterly report would look like for you to consider. Very apologize for this. Before I get to the errors, well, maybe I'll just jump to the errors while we're talking about that now. And then the financial report. Sorry, there are no page numbers, but there are lots of numbers. So one thing I I asked Diana, who did all the work of submitting the financial report in the iris this summer. So kudos to her. But I asked if there was any data that really stood out from the iris in her memory. She said, yes, the number of vacancies. I said, well, yes, but we now have three. But as you can see on ST three, when we submitted the iris, we had zero vacancies. Whereas last year we had seven. So last year was quite a busy time, bringing on a lot of new team members. And this year, at least for a period of time, we had zero. So maybe we'll get back to that at some point. Under the holdings section, H twenty-seven, I just wanted to bring your attention to the total print materials. That number of one forty-three, two ninety-five is down just less than six thousand from last year. And so that's reflective of, we've talked about a lot of the weeding that we've done in preparation for phase one and also the shifting of collections on the first floor. So it may have seemed that we were doing a lot of weeding and we did. But we also buy thousands of new items every year, which get added to our collection and have the wrong chance to survive and meet the needs of our patrons. So. So I just wanted to talk about that.
So weeding, I, I, it always makes me slightly nervous because I fear losing good books. So I assume there's some judgment brought to bear in terms of hanging, makes it really pull surprise winners and, you know, the.
Sometimes. Yes. It's, it's, some books aren't award winners.
What's that?
Some books are not award winners or popular.
The, the award, you know.
Yeah. The, you know, the canons, whether a classic canon or more contemporary canon are important for public libraries to have. So we make sure we have those even in our digital collections. So we've added a, a number of classic titles this fall to, to Libby, to make sure they're there. Part of the money, not to divert to Libby and our digital collections, but part of the extra money this year for advantage was to help us build a collection in Libby that is similar to physical collection, which is not just multiple copies of the bestsellers.
Yeah.
But, you know, a collection we find on. But, you know, a collection we find on fiction or cozy mysteries or children's literature, you know, or classics, so. Started that work to to build the digital collection too. And those don't need to be greeted.
Yeah.
So that's a that's a bonus. Moving on to the circulation section, there's C forty three, forty four, forty five, you'll see quite an increase. In our total ebook, downloadable audio and downloadable video circulation. This shows the continuing population, not just the living, but of hoopla. So. Another tangent, hoopla tangent is that it's too popular, so. We have just decided to limit to lower our monthly limit in hoopla from ten to six. In order to get control over our monthly invoices, which are outpacing our budget. So with that change, along with not allowing our patrons to see audiobooks that cost more than two dollars and eighty nine cents per checkout. We're confident that we will be back on budget for the rest of this fiscal year, and that's thirty six thousand dollars we're spending on hoopla. So without those changes, we were going to be well over thirty six thousand dollars and we don't have that money. You may have heard if you get the BPL newsletter or read their website that. In August, they announced they were getting out of the hoopla business. Too popular, too much money, so they just ended hoopla for the patrons. Right, so. Yeah, so they made some changes that hopefully short away times in Libby.
It's just a shorter retext, it doesn't say that much, but yeah.
So in the past year, there've been a number of large city or county library systems that have ended their hoopla. Service for patrons because it being too popular and not having enough money to sustain it, so we're not there yet, but we. We think that a monthly cap of six checkouts per person. The average is three point four checkouts per month per patron, so we don't think it's going to affect too many people. But it is going to affect some people because it's getting us back on budget.
In terms of that average though, how much of that is like an eighty, twenty or ninety ten? Like, cause.
Yeah.
I've never personally used hoopla and so like, I like, I would guess that the mode is zero. And that average is being verified by very, very heavy users.
Small number of people.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Like all like all problems are heavy users.
Yeah, it's some of the checkouts. Like if you're interested in a television series, like one season is not one checkout, like one episode's checkout, so you could easily go through. A s- a season if quickly in a week, if you liked something. Whereas one book is one checkout to read ten ebooks or listening to ten audiobooks, sounds like a big challenge. So the same with with music, you know, it could be tense.
Is there a way within hoopla then to limit the type of checkout, because I would get like. What's the way you're describing it, it seems like someone who's binging a TV show is going to go through thirty checkouts in a month, but no one's going to check out thirty books.
Exactly, so there are different ways we could restrict or control our budget and format is one of them. Another one of it is to establish a monthly cap on spending. On the problem of the monthly cap on spending, which sounds like it makes sense, is at thirty six thousand dollars, we're talking about three thousand dollars a month. Which hoopla doesn't have a way to manage unless they turn it into a daily limit, which would mean a hundred bucks a day. Which means, you know, at ten thirty in the morning, if a hundred dollars worth of stuff from checkout, everybody else for the rest of the day gets a message saying, uh-uh, come back tomorrow. It's not really user friendly and what happens is you push users to. Literally stay up until twelve oh one AM to check out stuff or wake up early to check out.
And they can reserve a conference room, yeah.
Yeah.
But we can restrict formats, but.
I was wondering if you need, if there's more data to be looked at in terms of, instead of like arbitrary, not arbitrarily, it's not arbitrary, instead of just saying everyone gets six things a month. Or whatever the base difference if it's. You know, ten books and only four TV shows, like I mean, I don't know, like I have no idea.
We can restrict by format, but not the amount of checkouts per format. So, you know, we don't have a lot of streaming services for movies or TVs, and so we want to at least keep those formats in hoopla, we do have Canopy. But public libraries don't have a lot of options for streaming services that are comparable to what we have had DVDs.
So functionality is not there to say you can have ten books, but only four TV shows.
Right, we could say, don't let our patients check out movies or TV.
Right, that's correct, but there's no way to limit each individual category, just overall.
Well, I appreciate that you're paying attention to this, it seems like we're just a big number of kickouts per month makes sense to me.
Just because we don't have them. We don't want to do it, it's just.
That would be something good to have a statistic line as to who is the. The persons that seem to be really taking all of this resource.
Yeah, and they're not bad patrons, it's good that they're they're using it a lot, but. Yeah, there's no way for us to. The way we are getting back on budget, we think is the best way and the fairest way for all patrons.
So the issue of everybody thinks it's free.
That's the other thing.
As far as, you know.
Yeah, the same with Libby, you know, I think. You know, you talk to friends of mine, they'd just be shocked to know how much money would sink in, especially when they have to wait twelve, fourteen, twenty four weeks for something and Libby's still.
Yeah, they can't be, I'd reuse, but I know that it costs us whatever, two or three dollars for a movie or something. They don't tell you that when you log in.
Yeah, at least that one's a buck.
What's that, it's a dollar?
A buck to check out.
I've talked to a lot of people who assume that ebooks are cheaper for the library. They're electronically, they're shocked to find out that over the life of the book, it's much cheaper to get a print version, assuming that's a number of checkouts.
I was just looking in over at today, and so the audiobook of Ellen Hildebrand's new novel that she wrote with her daughter, The Academy, is eighty dollars for one license. Yeah.
How many people would be able to access that?
One at a time.
Yeah, one at a time, but it tops out like that to me.
Yeah, some some licenses have a time time limit and some have a number of checkout limit.
That's all electronic resources, it's supposed to be changing.
Yeah, each year there's a bill introduced at the state house to help tackle this issue. That's up at State House now and. The Mass Library Association is working with publishers up there to have something to address this problem.
And never complaining to publishers, I know there was a lot of activity.
Yep, oh, yes. Yeah, I mean, as Rob notes, there's there should be no reason why the libraries are being charged more than the public. Or ebooks, when for physical books, we're getting a forty eight percent discount that you guys can't get, you know. But we have a contract because it's forty eight percent discount on that Ellen Hildebrand novel, so we're paying sixteen bucks.
If you're buying a book.
Yeah. I know we can always move on. Unless I download it somewhere.
But you could keep it forever.
Yes, yeah, yeah, for twenty bucks versus eight dollars.
So C forty three through forty five just showed the increasing popularity or continuing popularity of our digital resources. On the next page, C sixty three, which is non-resident circulation. So the NRC, non-resident circulation transactions is part of the formula that determines how much library state aid we get each year. So this is an important number and it's nice to see that it's increased by more than five thousand. Because we receive about twenty cents for each of these transactions as part of our library state aid. So the higher that number, better it is for us.
Is that a net number or gross number?
Gross.
It's a gross number?
Yes.
Do you happen to know what the net, is there a way to know what the net slash gross is like, does need to take in more books than we lend out?
So this is. Non-residents coming into the library, checking things out, it's not stuff going into delivery.
Got it.
It's only, it's it's supposed to be a financial. Financial money for the work your staff are putting in to serve non-residents in person. So it's it's somebody from doesn't live in Needham coming into the library and checking stuff, physical stuff out in person. That's what the eighty nine thousand is, not what somebody who lives in outside of Needham places a hold on and you put that book into a crate that goes into delivery. Because our staff really aren't involved in that transaction when it gets to their library.
So who are these people that are taking out two hundred something books a day on it? And eighty nine thousand circulation, but it's like. I'm like, that's stretching a lot of things for like non-residents.
There are a lot of non-residents using, I know this because when I went around collecting signatures, I asked, I had to talk to Needham Minister voters. I would say half the people I approach are not.
Yeah.
Do not live in Needham.
There is a huge population from Needham, those communities closest to us, Data, Dover, Wellesley, that use this building as their primary library. Plus, we also have. Many employees who live outside that also come in here and use us, and those count too as non-resident.
So. So each one of these is a ka-ching, ka-ching. That's, there are three parts that make up library study, non-resident circulation is one of those. As you're looking through this. Circulation information, holding information, there are a couple of notes here that lets you know that the federal government. Is no longer collecting ebook, holding information or database usage information, so some of the numbers may look like big drops from last year. It's just that they no longer are collecting that information, so we have no place to report it, so. Some numbers look quite off, that's. Right, yeah, you look at C one oh five.
Yeah.
So C one oh five, we used to be able to report our database usage, we can't anymore, it's no longer collected. Part of that is because some databases report. Sessions, some report searches, some report pages accessed, so there was no real standard, and so they said, just stop reporting. On the holdings of ebooks, you have hoopla, which just gives patrons access to hundreds of thousands of titles. And you have Libby where. We curate a collection, whether it's the network or us here in this building, we purchase licenses one by one, so. There's that disparity along with Canopy is also just a open. Open, it's not curated, so they just said, stop reporting those holdings because they don't really make sense, they're not uniform. So there was a lot of pushback, but this was a change on the federal level, not on the state level. So if you see some numbers that just don't make sense, you know, reach out to me, but there's notes in there that. Explain that too. And Kay had mentioned that program information was really for for the monthly report, and so S twenty two and S twenty three, I just want to point out. The programs reported for FY twenty five, the number of live programs held. It's about hundred and sixty eight higher than last year, and that. Related to about three thousand more people attending our programs, so. We thank Gail and Erin and Paula and her staff for all of the work that went into those numbers. It's a lot of work from planning to execution, marketing, follow through, invoicing and all sorts of things. So.
That's an impressive number of programs, I mean, that's that's two a day.
Yeah.
Every day.
It's very impressive.
Sometimes more than that, this room alone will have three events per day most days. It's shoulders this year most mornings. Here evenings, afternoons for the YA, plus we have, have the transfer branch today. Plus your own driver series, plus the things that the elephant does on the run. Of that goes in, plus whatever is done at the children's department. We run an awful lot of input stuff there that has more than ever, so it all adds up. Plus there was virtual stuff too with from other libraries.
There's the fact that the kids are down here now, count towards that too.
I believe when we were doing it last month, I think we did put that in, I don't think we counted it. I'm not sure where I ever put those stuff first, they may indeed be counted as program ones, once they came in here. I think we'll be discussing how those are getting recorded, but we did that for the month of September and discovered that we did have enough tables upstairs.
Yeah.
Moving on to financial report, I just want to talk about some of the figures that are important because they show that we were compliant. And we will be certified as a public library and therefore receive library state aid this year.
Are we still on ours?
No, the financial report was another attachment, also three eighth. Yeah. So the second page there, MU eleven and MU twelve are. The first important. Financial information, so the MARF FY twenty six, which is the municipal appropriation requirement, was two point three million dollars, which. Means that figure comes about, it's an average of the past three budgets multiplied by one point zero two five. Because they want to. Make sure that the budget at least increases by two and a half percent over the average of the past three years. So that's how that MAR is calculated, the two point three million, and so our budget for this year is two point four five seven million, so. It's higher than the MAR, so we got a check mark for that part of the compliance. The second one is the number of hours we're open per week and the number of days.
What what letter is it?
I'm sorry, I'm on the the next attachment.
Which MU number you brought down. Compliance?
Yes, on the second page, I just talked to MU eleven and MU twelve. Page three, it doesn't have. It's the compliance period for the hours and days open per week in the middle of the page.
Right.
For our population group, we need to be open a minimum of fifty nine hours per week and six days a week. So you can see here, we're open sixty six point two five hours and seven days a week, so we got another check mark there as being compliant. The last one is on page four, and this is how much you spend on materials. For the library collection, so MA five is for us to be in compliance one hundred percent. For this requirement, we would have need, we needed to spend three hundred and seven thousand dollars in FY twenty five on new materials for the library. This comes.
Beated by twenty two dollars?
No, so to be fully compliant, we needed to spend three hundred and seven thousand bucks. And so MA. And so MA thirteen shows what we did spend, uh, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So we passed that. So, um, a hundred percent compliant is thirteen percent of our budget, which is the three hundred and seven thousand. So because, uh, we have great support from the trust, trust funds, the friends.
No, that is counted, doesn't have much of a count.
Is, is this stuff that you're keeping an eye on over the course of the year in order to make sure we get what we, you know, we read all the state aids?
Yeah. And so our operating budget is crafted so that it alone can meet this requirement. That's, even when the museum passes, the friends pay for it, the foundation pays for three of them, that gets counted too. So so those are the three, um, areas from the financial report that we complied with. So we're certified and we're going to get money. So in two installments, the first one will be November, December, and the second one in March or April.
So thank you for meeting all those compliance.
Yes.
Thank you for explaining all the supports.
Yeah.
Actually very helpful.
The Harris.
Yes.
See how that interacts with our fund base.
Thanks. Yeah. There's a lot of information. If you have more questions, just reach out.
I figured the red, red letters meant something.
You know. And I'm just finishing up the director's report. Our D I B staff efforts are listed here. Staff attending a webinar on understanding depression. We had programs and displays in the children's departments. And then we have the reports from our collection about the occurrences of D A, D I B issues in things that we purchased last month. And then we have the new and withdrawn summary report, which, uh, shows that, um, that we are continuing to, uh, we continued to do some reading in September. We've just about done with the CDs. We only read it two in September. That is the report.
Great, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
And so gift lists circulated. You have a motion to gift lists.
Thank you, Megan.
My husband should be listening there too.
Okay.
Adam and I did some. History books, is there any particular type of history book?
Uh, no, it was a history of the book club that was shutting down. We needed, but some that we're supposed to be still helping. Barely noticed this before. So if we get another one, I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
And we're happy to see two of our artists sold work and donated their ten percent to the library.
Yeah.
That's not a bar.
It's not required.
Yes.
They're cheap for some of them, but they had some really good sales.
Yeah.
We're in discussion on the gift lists. Thank you to all of our vendors, those present, anonymous, and the artists. So I will take a voice vote on gift lists. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Gift list is approved unanimously. So moving to the next item on the agenda under new business. We have a vote to approve the loan of artwork from the town manager's office.
Yes, so, um, I'll start it. That's okay. So I never saw the, I never saw the town manager's office when Kate was here. So, um, I, in our monthly meeting, Katie invited me to her office and I got to see, um, the town manager's office, which had lots of bare walls. And so I thought, um,
Nice.
There was one painting that was on the walls in the area where phase one is happening, that we did not have a predetermined place to hang once, uh, phase one is over. It is here. It is a beautiful painting of Angelo Orso of the, um, historic Needham pharmacy. Katie has a very large wall in front of her.
That's going to go there?
It is a proposal. Um, so I talked to Kay and Rob about this idea. So Katie is interested in, um, having a loan of the painting, not a permanent loan, but a loan of the painting. So it could be hung in her office as a reminder of how she loves the library every day. So, um, you know, it's an unusual item to bring to the trustees. But we, we don't have a place where we're going to put it in the library once the team, new team room opens. And it's opportunity while Katie King is the town manager for it to be on loan there. Uh, if she were to leave, we would bring it back to the library. It wouldn't be on permanent loan to the office of the town.
Nice to try to think of the library when she's looking at the wall of her office.
So it's a, it's a nice painting. It's, um, it's contemporary. It's not, um, valuable.
Who's the artist?
Angelo Orso. Orso.
Needham artist. Um, I believe it's passed away in family to give us the picture. Um, it is the farm on Central Avenue, just beyond the town dump, so to speak. Um, it has that some additions since this was beaten, including that light cellar they added in life. But it's that going downward on the hill, going toward Dover. It'll be, if you're going toward Dover, it's going to be on the left-hand side. The old horse farm is what it is.
Have you spelled the last name? U R S S O.
Oh, geez. U R S S O. So before we open it up to discussion, do you have a motion to approve the artwork?
I'll move to some of the, the town manager briefing.
Second.
Discussion on it.
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Think it's a good usage of, of library material and sharing it with the town. Good idea.
It's a bright and lovely painting of the historic scene, Needham scene. And I think, um, you know, many visitors to our office will note it and, uh.
Are there any other paintings we have that are sort of been, been reserved because they've been taken off the walls around the structure?
Other paintings that, the few things that come off those wall, the wall parallel to Rosemary
Yeah.
will be put into the boss work.
How long is the loan? Has there been a determination or?
My suggestion is it's a loan as long as Katie King is town manager.
Okay.
My fear is if it was a permanent loan to the office of the town manager, that a new town manager may not want it and it may just end up in the basement of town hall and never find its way back here.
Right.
Because it was given to the library and it should, if it's not going to be on Katie King's office wall, it should be here.
Yeah, great. We can specify that on our motion. I do think that would be a good idea. Perhaps we can remove.
Move that we, we, the library temporarily loaned the painting by, what's his name?
Angelo Orson.
To, um, yeah, Katie King, town manager, for her, the duration of her.
Second.
Any further session for the vote? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed unanimously. Um, thanks for offering that. Um, next up, under new business, is a discussion and votes on library closings for calendar year twenty twenty-six. I'll hand it over to Rob for that.
Thanks. So, um, last October, the trustees approved the closings for calendar year twenty twenty-five. So I've brought forth a list of those closings, proposed closings for calendar year twenty twenty-six. There is, in addition, that you may have noticed, and that is the inclusion of Easter Sunday. And that's done for, um, looking at the data for Sunday's usage of the library and checkouts. The number of visitors to the library is sixty-eight percent than a normal Sunday on the past two Easter Sundays. And there's been sixty percent fewer checkouts on that day. We've also had, um, operational difficulties in finding staff to work that day. So, um, it's inclusion on this is not because it's a religious holiday, but because, um, of those factors that I just noted. Um, the other days listed are just updated from what you approved last year.
I approved it, but it's still right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I track this every year and I do find that even would be days fall differently every year. So it varies slightly from certain holiday falls. And I did find that, um, that this is consistent. Seventeen days, uh, the library's completely closed, and four par- partial closing days is consistent with what we.
Yeah, um, that reminds me, I, there is an error here that I forgot to correct that relates to the, what you just noted.
Yep.
Because July third is a Friday, will be closed on July third so that the full-time employees can get, the fourth of July holiday will be observed on Friday, July third. So that's a case where, where it falls, it means that we would be closed on third of July so that full-time employees get their holiday. But then we'd be closed on the fourth of July because it is the holiday.
Seventy-two days.
I see. Otherwise they would have gotten the holiday because they would be here on Sat- Saturday anyway.
Right, full-time staff don't work on Saturdays in July. I forgot to make that correction.
So will they open it up on the Monday?
That does bump us up, uh, you know.
It'd be open Sunday too.
On Sunday. So you go, you go Friday, it's the third, Saturday's the fourth, right?
The third, we'll be closed, the fourth, regular hours on that Sunday, the fifth, regular hours for the fall staff.
There's a question about wording up here. The last line says, why are we open on Sundays from one to seven? I mean, I know what it means, but it's a little day-ish because there's no indication that the library's open on Sundays from one to seven the rest of the year.
Oh, one to six, right.
For one, six, whatever the hours are. It's one, six, one, seven.
One to six.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on.
It gives you the impression that that's the Sundays that they're open. Correct. As compared to a limitation. Sundays for the rest of the year. And then I'm assuming the Sunday before Labor Day weekend is, whatever that August date is not.
It's the last one for the summer hours.
The Sunday before.
It's not, it's not, it's in August then. September sixth, so it'd be August thirty-first or something like that.
Would be the last one to five.
Okay.
Because the Sunday of Labor Day weekend will close and then the following one is the one to six, the first one to six.
Is it worth saying to August thirty-first then as opposed to?
So this year it may have to change.
No, I understand that.
Well, I think our schedule coincides with the school, um, the same as the school's schedule, right?
Yes.
I think, yeah, some of the school's schedules before Labor Day special.
Right.
So just to track, in, um, twenty twenty-one, we were closed for fifteen full days. And then twenty twenty-two, seventeen full days closed. Twenty-one full days. Twenty-four, that's sixteen days, and now we're eighteen. So, uh, you know, I just, I just want us to be careful about the creek, you know what I mean? So, you know, the public depends on the library and, um, be aware that.
Do you think with that, June is out of the calendar holiday?
Was that?
June.
So for some years, you get two days off, like I think it was the last year, you get two days off for June two, it falls
Right, just because the.
on a weekend, then it's fully closed on Sunday and it's closed again on Monday. So, you know, just want us to be careful.
Well, this is fewer than it had been.
So eighteen, yeah.
One was twenty-three?
We put, the twenty-one was the highest. And that's because of the Monday fall, the official holiday, the fourth falls on a Sunday, then we get Monday afternoon. So we have a very close case. Be aware.
Any further discussion on proposed closings as, as revised by Rob? All right. In that case, uh, did we get a motion for this? Do we need to approve?
Yeah. It's a policy.
Yeah, uh, move to approve, uh, the calendar year twenty twenty-six proposed library closings. Uh, with the intent to provide a document that, uh, Friday, July third will be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next up, under new business, uh, we have a discussion item not for vote today, which is the timeline for the team room policy. Rob, if you'd like, I can kind of quickly just summarize where I got this information from.
Okay.
Definitely, it might be helpful to use for context. So I just went online and searched for a bunch of our peer libraries. Um, nothing particularly scientific in terms of which towns to choose, other than communities located around inside of twenty-eight that have team room policies posted. Not everybody, not every library has one. Uh, so not every library has a team room policy. This is based purely on a review of the policies that are posted online. I think there are a couple of important caveats with this that I outlined, but you circulated these. The first is that, of course, there may be some internal policies, procedures that may not be reflected in the publicly posted policies. Um, and then second is that, and this is just something that I observed personally when going through these. Each team room is unique. Team rooms vary in size, they vary in prominence, they vary in how they're laid out physically within the library in terms of whether it's a walled-off, doored-off space or something a bit more open. And the policies do tend to reflect that. So they're, they're all unique to a degree and it reflects the space that they are governing. Um, so I just thought this would be useful to help inform our discussion of the team room policy, which we still have a decent amount of time to discuss and draft and approve at future meetings. Um, but thought it would be good to go over this stage, start thinking about what the policy might look like. So, um, I turn it over to, to Robert Michael, uh, for any thoughts on that.
Thank you for doing this work. This is great. Um, I've asked Erin to reach out to the team librarians of the libraries, uh, listed here for the, um, the columns on the right to see if there's more information that she can get from them about, um, you know, do the outdoors that could be locked or, or not? And, um, is there an internal procedure regarding tutoring? You know, for those where it says not discussed, you know, so, um, she might have, get some information from them, but, uh.
This is student to student.
This is where this is.
I assume this tutoring means.
Yeah, that's okay.
Right, in most cases, except for the one with notes on our students.
Right. I'm sure that was an interesting distinction. But the, the rest of it typically, the, the prohibition of any tutoring, didn't distinguish between student to student. During, I think, the goal's probably more against a tutoring.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. You know, student to student tutoring probably falls more under study groups than.
Yeah.
And tutoring also, when I say not discussed, that also means it might have been another policy. I I didn't read through every policy information.
I thought this was real helpful, just as a as a tool to like spur that discussion and just. Give people some kind of a. You know, metaphorically, a picture in their mind as to how this could all shake itself out, so. And then there's the other aspect of that, too, is that this, some of this here isn't necessarily teens because somebody who's eleven. Those are things that. It's a whole, that's a whole different aspect of this. So it's really just. Condensing some of the information, but also seeing. I think it's kind of interesting that hours locked, there's nobody who does it. So. So there's like a. I I think what hap- what will will probably be something is to work out some kind of compromise that makes sense. How this all will become policy. It's just people giving their, we as trustees giving our input. I think that's really, it's critical and it's important because there are. As we've all had, there have been people that have approached us about this. And so it's it's really important that we have an honest conversation about it. But also be realistic and fair as to what we actually are going to be able to accomplish. I think that's something, it will take time, but I think we'll come to a real good. Bit of ground.
I I I'm I was curious also, I don't know that we've ever talked about the notion without how during school hours. And Brooklyn, they allow all patrons to use the area that would be otherwise, I suppose, unused.
I think that was one of the discussions that.
And I.
Where the whole lock question came from is.
Yes.
We didn't want. To allow non-teens to use that space, like to hang, like to sit down and do work and whatever.
Even during school.
Even during school hours. And so I think what we were probably more going for is what most of the other people have is that. Teens and tweens only even at all times of the day. During school hours and outside of school hours. Yeah, that that's my sense of what you're parenthetical about patrons can browse. Right, patrons can browse just means, right, you can you can look at the collection, the initial draft that we looked at. I've reacted to back in, was that August, I think? That contemplated that patrons could browse, right, at at any age. So if you wanted to focus in the teen room, go in there, you can take it out and then. But you but you don't sit down or kind of linger there, be honest, just just do that. Based on this subset of libraries, that seems to be the most common. Those top construction, there were three, Wadland, Kirkline, and Wellesley that that do seem to open it up to all patrons during school hours.
Right.
The remainder did not. Some policies voice this particularly strongly. Others are a little bit gentler about it in terms of, you know, you will be removed or library staff may discuss this with you if you're lingering. But this is kind of just a distillation of what we saw.
I'm I'm curious, what would be the reasoning? Assuming during school hours, teams, you know, the. Teams are not using that space. I'm curious, what would be the reasoning to not let other people sit in that area?
To not have to then have staff go kick them out at two thirty. Yeah, there's students during the day who might be during school hours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob, just say, Aaron, just to talk to her, I don't remember who said.
Yeah, Aaron.
Is it possible she will also check if there's dedicated staff?
Dedicated to the space.
Just, yeah. And then.
Like while it's open or just in general?
In general, yeah. But so. Things that might be in there that I might want to go look at, like, like hundred days books, would those be in the team? So that, like, I could go and grab one.
Tell them on yourself.
Uh, I thought. But it's gonna be moving, okay, there's a lot of unsavable. Anyway, but so, you know, I could go and browse, get the graphics.
And, you know, graphic novels. Area adults might be interested in graphic novels.
There were a couple of things. I've been to a new one. And it was, that is staffed. It was very clear when I walked in that if I had not gone up to the staff person and said, I am a trustee from another library, we're about to redo our space. But she would have told me to find another place to sit at.
So it says patrons can browse.
Yes, yes. But it was clear, like, when I sat down and, like, wanted to, like, look at.
Oh.
So I had the eyes of that staff person on me.
I could feel it.
Tracking me to see what I was doing. Wellesley is in a corner behind a closed door. There are no sightlines there and it is not staffed. Now, whether or not that was locked, I do not know. But it was clearly not a place that was welcoming me as a non-team to use that space, even though it was empty when I walked by.
Right. I I think because ours is such a prominent part of the library, that won't be. That would be definitely something you'll know as soon as you walk towards it, that there's something totally different just by the layout, but also. Yeah, you'll you'll get that because I've been over to Newton, I was over at Wellesley. And I was looking around just seeing the different kinds of things, but. It's that I I did tell them, I was a trustee, just looking at these things. So. Played the trustee card, just so they knew we were halfway cool, but. Yeah, it it's. It's it's a real.
Part of the.
Can you get a card from the state? I went from the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, I know, but it'll be signed with your person. I don't know where mine is though.
I moved, so I don't know, it could be on the box.
So I did go to Brooklyn, I mentioned before, and that's a big space. It's downstairs in the basement, big space, because during school hours, nobody was there. I walked in, I walked around, it was pretty fine, nobody bothered me. And.
For their policies as well, yeah.
That's right. So we see here now that the policy is out there as well. I do feel like since our space is going to be in a very prominent area that. Patients are for many, many years, of course, we may have to go there. That barring them during school hours doesn't feel comfortable to me. So.
You're talking about browsing or?
Yeah, patrons, but they could walk in, browse. I don't know, the question of sitting and letting people spend time there, doing, you know, reading their book. That that's something that, you know, I guess we need to.
There's going to be also. TV, television in that area? Two.
But not like on, and we don't have tape.
So what do you have?
It'd be for gaming.
Okay, just for gaming.
We have to connect to the Wi-Fi for, like, to offer. If someone can. Go watch, like, CNN all morning.
Yes, that's personal. I wouldn't want people to feel like if they walked into browse that they'd be muscled out. You know, I I wouldn't want that atmosphere. But the question whether they can sit, TV, you know, that's. They're reading books, but that's.
So the agenda item says discussion of timeline for this new policy. Is that what we're talking about? I think just as more substantive, we can certainly, you know, we're not barred from discussing the substance of the policy. You know, the the agenda item says timeline, I think. Perhaps as as a initial item and also being cognizant of having fifteen minutes left in the meeting. Perhaps you can think about what the overall timeline should be. Or reviewing and approving this policy. Are we comfortable? Kind of thinking this over, digesting this for the next month and addressing it at the November meeting in detail or substance? I think we'd have to have a policy, probably done by January at the latest, depending on.
Right.
Like it's like a voted on food policy by January, so probably a. Final draft by December, which makes sense because then we have discussion next month in November, especially once Karen gets us all. Yes.
Yes. So I'm glad we started this early, because this is a great discussion. So in regards to the timeline, I think at the August meeting. It was brought up that perhaps we open the teen room without a policy in place, you know, with room rules in place. But perhaps we see how things play out for a number of months after it opens before. Voting on a final teen room policy. So that's one thing that we could consider. Also, if it's useful for the discussion. Over this month, we can develop those room rules and bring them to the November meeting. So that you can see that draft of the room rules that would be internal procedures staff are using to. Ensure. The teen room, if they use properly. It won't be a complete, like. Copy of our appropriate behavior policy, but there are some space specific things that we would. Incorporate as our. Rules that wouldn't necessarily be in a policy per se. If that would be useful.
I like the idea of gathering. Open to this. Well, teen room, the door closed. Go in, maybe not, maybe. Looking out there every day.
Right. And I think that it's important to, I agree with you, Megan, and I I think it's important to see, like, what happens over a period of time because. That kind of space in the summer is going to be a whole different dynamic. Because children won't necessarily, or the kids or teens, necessarily be in school. They probably will be. On vacation unless they're on a staycation. And so that will be something. To gather information or data on how that, how seasonally. This, how this change progresses over each, between school and then the summer and then the return. So I think it's it's good to gather some information without having to be completely. Cemented in one set of ideas or a certain set of ideas. But I do remember we did use that as a caveat that we would. Allow this process to be forwarded in a different kind of way. So we can gather information. I think that's that's smarter. It gives us a little bit more time to observe.
So would we collectively be comfortable, Rob, suggestion that we reduce proposed internal room rules at the November meeting? And take it from there and substantive discussion?
Yes. Just one note on on the age groups. I don't have any strong feeling one way or the other, but just so we know. It's looking like with the Pollard renovation, we attended a Pollard renovation meeting. Looking like we're probably going to incorporate sixth graders back in the Pollard. So, you know, when we decide on what our age group is. So I think sort of have to see if you take all Pollard or none of Pollard, although I think that it has to break according to. This what the ages groups are at the schools.
I went to Pollard, it was seven, eight, and nine. Yes. High school was only three. Yeah.
A a bunch of these are ages ten or eleven, which would probably be sixth grade would be.
Oh, yeah. Sixth grade is.
Eleven, twelve?
Uh, it's now, it's like ten, eleven.
Eleven, right, yeah.
Eleven would be fifth or sixth grade probably.
One thing that would be different and much improved when the teen room opens, that is not the teen room. Is the space outside of it and that construction wall will be down, will have more space for. Tables and seating outside of the teen room and it won't be as full as it is now. By teens. They'll be in the teen room. So.
Right.
The environment and access for enough seating and tables for patients who aren't teens would be much improved when the teen room opens.
Are those stacks that are going disappearing, that? The stack that right outside there?
Outside the study rooms?
Yes.
Yeah, those will dump. So that'll have more space, right, for tables and.
Right.
Opportunities. So there'll be that change. Which may be useful to see play out in relation to, you know, the policy. Because. Now everybody is outside of the teen room and.
The observation of how that works in reality. Or the critical, etc. Just have the space for students during school hours, after school hours, during the summer. Good to see and face the policy of that.
We could bring the room rules in November, the draft of that, too.
Yeah. That doesn't. Just use some draft, any any further discussion on the teen room timeline? And the next item.
Would that mean that that the November meeting, should we state that the November meeting will be? Discussion of the timeline?
Discussion of the rules, I'm sorry. For the the internal rules. Which would be posted on the website, but we'd be using that eternally. Setting rules on an interim basis. Moving to whole business, we have the children's room policy.
Yes. So attach any packet was the final draft that had two changes that came out of the September meeting. One was the addition at the end of the fourth paragraph that the story room. Storytime room and craft stack room are not available for private reservations. And then in the final paragraph, that's not italicized. The reference to, as described, the safe child policy. So those changes have been incorporated into this final draft. For discussion in a school program tonight.
So I guess first I can get a motion to approve. To approve the final draft of the. For discussion. You're in the discussion. So will be voiced votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Right, children's room policy is approved unanimously. Next up on the agenda is the art and exhibits committee report.
Okay, yeah, so we do have unfortunate cases that are emptied this month, but starting at the end of this month, we have a. Terrarium artist, we run in bar coming in. And he supplied and. Vote on him tonight. We also have one other applicant who is applying for next June. Rob found him and I reached out to him. He is interested in, except he's got, I think, an exhibit in. Bay in Natick and would like to move into here, if that will happen. June and, you know, just beautiful, colorful, lively. Work of his local Boston area artist. What's that? Oh, yes, yes. Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. We haven't done much photography, we just have to make prints, which is some of the things that's digital on a screen these days. Yeah. That would be interesting.
It's been a while since we had a photographer.
That's been a while. Okay. So, um.
You said we bring thing.
They're completely enclosed.
That's what I'm trying to say, like, like seal them up and they live for.
Once you get the water in, it'll be good.
Yeah.
No, they have sunlight, they have little plugs that's in it.
Close the wire.
So like.
Right.
I mean, I know that those are versions of terrariums, which is, I'm looking at one that is open.
That was.
That's what I was buying if these are. Yeah. The smaller one is what my clothes are gonna have in our pieces.
Okay.
So I think she could use a motion to approve, um, Iran Inbar and Sharif Mohammed for respectively, um, November and June twenty sixth.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous, I think, okay. Uh, next up is in.
Yeah. Here we go. You guys pass these down. These are upcoming. We have in twelve days, Alyssa Kazin coming in to do her, uh, stuff with the first responders. I really have to say this in a public way. A lot of thanks goes to Gayle and Dennett for uh, just really helped guiding me to get this all together and stay on me to make sure that I get it together. And, uh, what's pretty interesting is that, uh, we have just maybe something in terms of, uh, of the last two for the Reynolds brothers and Jimmy Myers, just a better kind of, how would you call it, a description of what they're gonna discuss?
Yeah, we gotta pull that together so I can get it up on.
Right.
Start. I'm gonna start pushing this, but I gotta have it up online before I can push.
There you go.
And I would ask all of us to try to, try to come and encourage friends and families, basically, that we wanna have the.
Oh, right, and, and what's really kind of neat is that Alyssa Kazin is the first one up. So she's October, October twenty sixth. She's actually up on the, on our screen boards. Um, and you get to see like what she's, she's gonna bring two to three practitioners with her. That she's a Reiki master, so people will be able to sit here. She'll be talking about it, but also have that being done. And I've reached out to the Needham schools, the fire department, and the police department because those are our first responders. And I actually used to work with Needham police. So I'm looking to make sure that they come because this is right up their alley in terms of people dealing with stressful situations. I'm sorry. And what's kind of interesting, I have to say this on the Reynolds brothers, if you hold that up Jay. That little artwork there? Gayle and Dennett and myself have that artwork signed. With, it's the only one by itself like that, so I made sure that I took care of Gay with that and. So, and I was sitting there with them while he was doing that. He was talking to me doing that. So it, it should be, I'm not worried about people, uh, I'm more worried about, uh, Alyssa. Jimmy's well known and Alyssa's a regular hardworking gal. And I really would like to see us all there because it's just supporting what we're doing and, uh.
Sixteen.
So the dates are the twenty sixth of October for Alyssa Kazin. Uh, the Reynolds brothers is November ninth. And Jimmy Myers is two days after his birthday. He has the same birthday as my mom, November fourteenth. And, uh, he's here on the sixteenth of November. So everything is in queue. They have their, what was it, the new W nines, everything. We had to redo all their paperwork, but they got it all in like within the same day, which is great.
They all get paid.
Yes.
So then have they been pressed again?
Uh, the Alyssa Kazin one is posted in attachment for the month. They said I am pressuring him for descriptions, so I can put the other two up. So they will go up as soon as I get it.
Can I make one brief suggestion?
Sure.
Um, on the Jimmy.
Myers?
Yeah. Yeah, Jimmy Myers, it says something like storyteller, it says something in a riots.
Yeah.
Which I had to Google.
I did too.
So you might wanna like see what that is.
And it might not be the right word because apparently it's from, from Western Africa.
Or Haitian, it's a.
It's, it's like a, a person historical, historian.
So you might want to just put in parentheses like.
I could do that. I'll let that. It's smaller print underneath.
Yeah.
Yes, I looked it up too.
Right, because I'm like, is this a typo?
It's a good word or a word.
Yeah.
Everybody, man, this place is tough, but it, it's, it's, it's good and it's, um, you know, I'm just, I'm just happy that for the next person to follow me, I will have a blueprint for you so that you don't have to go completely crazy. It's, it's hard, but it's not that hard. It's just you have to figure out who and when and just go after them. Once they say yes, you got them, then you do everything to keep them there. So that, that's the best part of it. But other than that, we're on schedule. I will get those other things from the Reynolds brothers. What's really kind of hard nailing them down is they, they were on Good Morning America a couple of day, a week or so ago. So it's like they're on tour, so it's not that easy, but I've known them myself personally over twenty years, so.
What it, what's the age range for the books that they write?
Oh, man, they're, what would you say, five years old and.
Maybe even younger.
Younger than that.
The dot.
So they're, they're, they're expanding as we speak. Their books are in fourteen different languages. I just hope we have enough space for when they come here. That was like, well, we'll see what happens, but.
The Reiki session on the twenty sixth, is that child appropriate or what age?
It could be however, you're not necessarily physically. You know.
But like older children.
Yes, yes, you could do teenagers and you can always ask that you, um, I don't think anybody would invade somebody's space without, first of all, asking and then when somebody sees that, the way the room will be set up, I think there'll be practitioners, the podium is here, there'll be practitioners across. And maybe if there are three of them, maybe one will be in the back, you know, just so it engages the audience. And I would, uh, our Jeffrey, who's Jeff Arnold upstairs. Uh, Alyssa came to visit with Gay and talk and see this room. One of the coolest things is Jeff Arnold was having a problem with his hand. She said, would you like me to do some Reiki on him? And she did. Jeff said to me that night, he said, I don't know what it is she did, but my hands feels really good. So there's, there's something, that's why I said in this thing, a little something for everyone. But I'm done.
Thank you, Michael.
Oh, no.
For those.
I, I just wanted, I want it to happen and be over so I could kind of exhale. It's stressful.
Um, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, we've got the friends in the live group with Jay, any, any updates there?
Well, I know they have a, a board meeting next, next week. Uh, they had a successful book sale, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and if you went nice article in the Needham Observer, uh, about some of the volunteers and the friends who work so hard. And I'll mention that there's a, uh, a, a speaker this coming Sunday, Margaret Billett, I think that's how you pronounce her name, Billett. Uh, is gonna have a conversation, uh, with a, a Needham, uh, psychologist, uh, about ageism and you know, issues relating to, you know, she wrote a book called American Elder Side. But basically, uh, you know, a, a book that, that talks about, you know, the, the government impact on, on, on the elderly and and I, 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 I know there's been a, a number of people who've signed up, but there's, there's still some
Lots of room.
openings available.
It's not as popular as some of the others.
Well, thank you, Jay, for that, that update.
Can I just, uh, quickly, um, the friends have a new recording secretary who is Megan Mistery, who ran for trustee in the spring.
Yeah.
So she's, uh, stayed involved.
Good.
Ever, any updates on the L F N?
Yeah, I have several updates that were passed me by that. Very rough. And, uh, she wanted to be here tonight, but had a conflict. So we, we met in September and our next meeting is actually tomorrow night. Four updates, November. Um, but a few things to note. Uh, their annual appeal letter is going to be mailed, uh, this week to precinct G and H. Uh, and then in April, they're planning to send their annual appeal letter to an additional, um, set of precincts I and J to expand their outreach during this this week. This is the first time they tried. Uh, the L F N had a table at the October fifth Power Square, so folks came across it. Um, but they had many books to stop by, uh, kids and adults, uh, shared that they had. They shared over a hundred titles and things that they were reading. Uh, they were getting out their brochure, um, and contact information, also did voice stickers and bookmarks, uh, it's back in some of their books for adults. The nominating, uh, committee is continuing to search for new members, specifically those who are familiar with, uh, nonprofit software. Um, and those with marketing expertise, because you know, other folks are looking to be involved in some way in the library. Contact me or Kathy, uh, or anyone else you know. They found a new treasurer, um, so you have a recruitment. I mentioned this, uh, Steve Ballack, um, Needham resident CPA is updating, uh, their financial records now. Um, expanding budget entries, moving, uh, and moving the foundation away from fever basis to. That's really, really great. He's been doing great, uh, work. Uh, W A L L I C P. Uh, the finance committee here in Needham is reviewing, uh, the foundations, that's a policy statement because of the review since twenty fifteen. So that's, uh, on deck. Uh, they're also reviewing bylaws, which will be revised soon. Uh, and last note is that the foundation's reviewing its public charity classification. There's been some changes since, um, we were, uh, the foundation applied to be a public charity. Uh, and so we're making sure that we're.
Great, thank you for the update.
Just one quick question. So I was interested to hear that the finance committee, do they have, what, do they have any jurisdiction?
These are all, uh, public funds.
Did you mean the, the foundations?
Maybe the foundations. Yeah. Yeah, that, that might sweep this reading, Kathy's notes, uh, just as the finance. And I know the incidents of the board as well.
All right, thank you for the update. Um, that brings us to trustee comments to have.
Most to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.